Okay, roll call please.
Mayor McKay.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schroeder.
Here.
Councilmember Amundson.
Here.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
And Councilmember Jabowski.
Here.
We have a forum, Mayor.
Awesome, okay, if we could please stand for the pledge and you lead if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the American people.
And to the republic from which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Well, as I am going to hand it over, I guess, to Jeff. Anybody want to do introduction prior to that? Andy, Keith?
Yeah, I think Keith will, Mayor.
Sure, Mayor, the, uh, the next item on the agenda, or the first item on the agenda is quasi judicial in nature. Um, and in order to start this off, we'll have Jeff read the title into the record and then we will, or sorry, Russell read the title into the record. And then we will start with the, uh, the process and I will walk everyone through what we're doing here tonight. Russell?
Yes, Keith, would you like me to swear the witnesses in first or you want me to read the item first?
Uh, read the item and then we'll do all that.
Sure, all right, the first item is the Circle S Estate Plaid. This is a resolution and final order of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida approving application number L 54-20. The Circle S Estate Plaid comprising forty-two single-family dwelling lots on forty-seven point four-five, sorry, forty-seven point four-eight acres. Generally located five hundred feet south of Griffin Road on the east side of Southwest one-sixtieth Avenue. Authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date. Item four is a Circle S State Site Plan, and this is a resolution and final order of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida approving application number SP-76-20, the Circle S Site Plan for forty-two single-family dwellings on forty-seven point forty-eight acres. Generally located five hundred feet south of Griffin Road on the east side, Southwest one-sixtieth Avenue. Authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary and effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell, and I'm having video problems, so I apologize for that, but the audio should be working perfectly. Um, the, these items that you just read into the record are quasi judicial in nature. Most of the time when council members make decisions on items, it's legislative in nature, which means they're setting policy for the town. Uh, in these cases, they're acting as jurors, listening to the set of facts before them. And if they determine that the applicant has proven by competent substantial evidence that it may carry of the code, the council is required to adopt and approve the items. Uh, the two items that we have heard you read in, we're going to treat as one item with two separate votes. Because this is quasi judicial in nature and the fact that everyone testifying, uh, i- is going to be given, uh, honesty and credit to what they're saying, we will ask that everyone be sworn in. And when members of the public speak, they also need to be sworn in and need to state that they've been sworn in as part of the proceeding. So, Russell, at this point, if you could please swear everyone into this item.
For everyone who's going to testify tonight, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me, do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do. I do.
Okay, uh, the way that the quasi judicial hearings.
I do.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, the way the quasi judicial hearing is going to work is that we are first going to call on Jeff Cadem from the town staff to present the staff report. It then will be going over to the applicant and the applicant's counsel is Dennis Mealy. I see him on the, online, he's going to make his presentation. Then it will go to council for any questions. Uh, and then we'll go to, uh, the public, uh, for any public comment. Uh, and then back to Jeff and, and Mr. Mealy, and then following back to the council to deliberate on this item. Before we open up this hearing and turn it over to Jeff Cadem, there's something in Florida called the Jennings Rule, which requires you all to disclose whether or not you've had any quasi judicial, uh, sorry, conversations outside of this hearing with anyone concerning this matter. So if anyone.
Mayor, I have not.
I have not.
No?
I have not.
My turn, I'm trying to think of somebody that I haven't talked to. Um, basically, I've spoken to all the civic association presidents, uh, the homeowners groups out in country estates, Dean's Ranches, uh, Sunshine Ranches Group, Rolling Oaks Group. Um, it's been pretty vast, I've been trying to get a lot of input from the residents.
Keith, let me reconsider my answer just for a second. Are you, are you specifically talking about the petitioners?
No.
Anyway, so if I talk to, say, Jeff Cadem, I have to disclose that?
Well, that's town staff, no, but if you spoke to anyone in the public about this item, you need to disclose that.
Yes, I have, um, I've spoken to a couple of residents as well. Uh, Jim Albritton is one, and Newell Hollingsworth is another.
Thank you. Um, at this time, I will open up this hearing and call on Jeff Cadem, uh, to not only present the staff report, uh, but also to present his findings and recommendations of town staff.
Hey, thank you, Keith. Again, this is going to be one presentation for both items. Uh, the staff report's been entered into the record and I'm going to hit the highlights. C.C. Homes at Southwest Ranches LLC is the applicant, they're under contract to purchase the forty-seven point four-eight acre Circle S Farms property located on the east side of Dykes Road, immediately south of Calusa Corners Park. The property is designated rural estates on the future land use map and is zoned rural estate, permitting residential development at a maximum density of one unit per net acre. Calusa Corners borders the north side of the property. A hundred-foot SBDD canal right-of-way and lake system borders the east side. Uh, and a hundred-and-eighty-foot FP, a hundred-and-eighty-foot wide FPL transmission easement runs north-south through the property. Each of the forty-two lots is at least one net acre in area. The largest lot measures one point zero-three acres. The overall density is point eight-eight units per acre. In order to achieve this density, the site plan does not contain any stormwater retention lakes and utilizes four flag lots, uh, to achieve economies. All of the lots comply with the minimum requirements of the RE district. Stormwater drainage will be accomplished through interconnected dry retention basins on each lot and a system of inlets and pipes that move stormwater from west to east with two outfalls into the adjacent South Broward Drainage District Canal. The Drainage District has approved the site plan and signed off on the plat. The extensive area dedicated to dry retention combined with the FPL easement has resulted in some lots having small or relatively narrow buildable areas. The developer has provided a lot-fit study, which is included in, as an attachment to the backup, to demonstrate that the, or at least one of its home models, and I'm going to, to.
Jeff?
Yep.
You're looking. Jeff, your audio is a little fuzzy.
Hang up here. Yeah. Um, I'm not sure what I can do about that, Keith.
Can you start over?
Is it that bad that you couldn't hear me at all?
I missed at least a minute.
I heard you.
Hey, Jeff, do me a favor, turn off your video for the, the presentation.
Think we have a ban?
That's perfect, now if you could just resume, uh, from the beginning so that everyone can hear it.
Okay. Get back to where I was.
That's fair.
Okay, starting over, this is a, uh, a summary of the staff report, which has been entered into the record for both the plat and the site plan. C.C. Homes at Southwest Ranches LLC is the applicant, which is under contract to purchase the forty-seven point four-eight acre Circle S Farms property located on the east side of Dykes Road, immediately south of Calusa Corners Park. The property is designated rural estates on the future land use map and is zoned rural estate, permitting residential development at a maximum density of one dwelling unit per net acre. Calusa Corners borders the north side of the property and a one-hundred-foot South Broward Drainage District Canal right-of-way and lake system borders the east side of the property. A one-hundred-and-eighty-foot wide Florida Power and Light Transmission Easement runs north to south the length of the property. There are forty-two lots. Each of the forty-two lots is at least one net acre in area. The largest lot measures one point zero-three acres. The overall density is point eight-eight units per acre. All of this is in compliance with the town's requirements. In order to achieve this density, the site plan does not utilize stormwater retention lakes, which don't count towards lot area. Instead utilizes, uh, dry retention areas, uh, supplemented by a stormwater distribution system, piping system without falls to the SBDD canal to the east. The, the development also employs, uh, four flag lots, uh, which enable it to put, uh, some lots behind other lots to be able to maximize, uh, the number of, of homes that can be built on the property. The dry retention basins, um, are throughout the property, uh, extensively within the Florida Power and Light easement, uh, as well as the periphery of the development, uh, and in between lots and some areas. Um, I have a color-coded drawing of this, um, which I'm not going to show you now because you probably might, my voice probably cut out, I can't share my screen. But, uh, but I'm hoping that, uh, the applicant has this as well. Uh, I've asked them to, uh, include that in their presentation and it just helps depict, uh, the land use of this, um, this property. South Broward Drainage District has approved the site plan and signed off on the plat. The extensive area dedicated to dry retention combined with the Florida Power and Light easement has resulted in some lots having relatively small or narrow buildable areas. The developer has provided a lot-fit study, its dash request, which is included in the backup, to demonstrate that the lot with the narrowest buildable area will still be suitable for at least one of its home models. The homes are going to be, uh, on individual septic and well, uh, there won't be any municipal water or sewer uh, in this development. The development will have a single ungated entrance from one-hundred-and-sixtieth Avenue. The internal streets will be open to the public, but will be owned and maintained by the Homeowners Association. Centralized mailboxes will be located in the center of the development with a pull-off area. The development will have no streetlights, sidewalks, curbs, or gutters. The proposed Homeowners Association documents are currently under review by myself and the town attorney to ensure that the documents do not include restrictions that are unduly inconsistent with the town's rural lifestyle. I'm going to ask the applicant to address this during his presentation. A thirty-foot landscape buffer is provided along Southwest one-hundred-and-sixtieth Avenue and a ten-foot landscape buffer is provided along the other property lines. The Homeowners Association will be responsible for maintaining the landscape portion of Dykes Road and budding the community, including the irrigation system. The internal streets will be lined with live oaks spaced an average of forty feet on center. A pair of thirty-two foot, uh, thirty-two square foot non-illuminated community entrance signs will flank the, uh, the Dykes Road driveway into the development. The sign will consist of bronze aluminum letters mounted to a six-point-five-foot-high split-faced stone entrance feature with a planter box. The signs comply with code required. The site plan and the plat satisfy all, or will satisfy all concurrency requirements. Uh, the only mitigation that was required for concurrency was with regard to transportation concurrency. Uh, and in this case, the developer is going to create additional vehicle storage within the southbound left turn lane on the north side of Griffin Road. So this would be the turn lane for people coming south on Weston Road to make a left turn onto Griffin. Southwest one-hundred-and-sixtieth Avenue will remain a two-lane road with a new northbound right turn lane into this property and a southbound left turn lane into this property. Broward County is requiring the developer to dedicate a bus shelter easement on one-hundred-and-sixtieth Avenue and to construct a bus landing pad measuring eight feet by forty feet adjacent to the future bus shelter. County staff is, is recommending a waiver of the sidewalk requirement that otherwise applies under the County Land Development Code for all trafficways, which, uh, one-hundred-and-sixtieth Avenue is, uh, in consideration of the objection that staff has filed with the county. Staff recommendation, we find that the proposed plat and the site plan will comply with the requirements of the code when the following conditions are satisfied. Number one, plat must be recorded prior to issuance of building permits for any dwelling unit or as otherwise may be provided by inter-local agreement between town, uh, the town of Southwest Ranches and the developer and the county. Number two, uh, the town reserves the right to inspect landscaping, uh, within the development site and on one-hundred-and-sixtieth Avenue on a periodic basis to make sure that it's green and growing. And, uh, uh, if the town finds that there are dead or unhealthy materials or they're not growing at a normal rate, uh, the developer or Homeowners Association, as applicable, will be required to, uh, pull out the bad trees, put in some new trees, or otherwise rectify those issues. Uh, the Declaration of Restrictive Covenants that will run with the community must be approved by, uh, the town planner and the town attorney before recordation. And this must, uh, occur prior to the issuance of the first building permit for a dwelling. Developer shall execute a landscaping, maintenance, encroachment, and identification agreement in a form acceptable to the town attorney to cover the landscaping and irrigation equipment in the Dykes Road right-of-way, and this has to be done prior to issuance of the first building permit. Developer, the developer shall comply with technical corrections to the site plan and plat documents pursuant to the final development review comments issued by staff, uh, dated July thirty-first, twenty-twenty, again, prior to the issuance of the first building permit. Developer shall obtain town permits for the removal and relocation of trees. Developer shall execute and record a tri-party agreement for reducing the taper of the southbound left turn lane that I talked about before on one-hundred-and-sixtieth Avenue onto Griffin Road, located within the city of Weston, as complete mitigation for satisfying road concurrency. And it's also noted that if the developer provides the requisite funds for the turn lane improvement prior to recordation of the plat, this tri-party agreement won't be required and this condition will have been deemed, will be deemed satisfied. And finally, uh, the last condition is one that I'm adding to the recommendations. And that condition is that the developer meet with the Rural Arts Advisory Board as to the design of the community entrance sign and consider its recommendations. Uh, this is not intended to force the developer to redesign the sign, uh, but just to see what, uh, the Rural Arts Advisory Board, uh, has in mind because they've worked with other developers, uh, and come up with some mutually agreeable, um, stylistic changes that have really enhanced the signs. And in this case, since the developer's trying to incorporate rural aspects into the development such as, uh, split rail, white split rail fences, uh, this might be a really good, uh, helpful process, um, for potentially, uh, helping the signage complement the other things that the developer's doing. As such, any stylistic changes that are made pursuant to the Rural Arts Advisory Board recommendations would be approved administratively and wouldn't have to come back to council. And, uh, that concludes the staff report and recommendations.
Uh, thank you, Jeff. Does any member of the town council have any questions before we turn it over to the applicant for their presentation?
Keith, uh, can we have an opportunity to ask questions after the presentation?
Of course.
Thank you.
Any questions of Jeff at this time?
Not I.
See, uh, at this time, Dennis, if you can unmute yourself, uh, state your name and address for the record and that you've been sworn in. Also, uh, because of the disjointed nature of Zoom, if you could also please state that you've heard the staff conditions and, and agree with them, uh, and proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, uh, this is Dennis Mealy, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, so Dennis Mealy, two hundred East Broward Boulevard for Lauderdale on behalf of the applicant, uh, have been sworn. I did hear, uh, Mr. Cadem's report and we concur with all of the recommendations he gave, including the one that was added at the end. Uh, we're fine with all of those. Uh, also, we reviewed the, um, resolutions for this evening and we have no objections to the conditions of either the plat resolution or the site plan resolution. We're, we're okay with all of those. Uh, I have been asked to, uh, add a little bit more detail about, um, what would be in the site plan resolution on page two, uh, paragraph number three of section two, I'll get to that in a minute. Uh, we have a couple of quick slides to show, um, so I, if we could pull those up and then my, uh, my client, Jimmy Wright, uh, will advance those. I'll stay off the camera in hopes of not, um, messing up the sound. So, Jimmy, do we have those slides available? Thank you. So if we could just go to the next one, please? I know where, everyone knows where this is, but it's always nice to start off with an aerial photograph. Um, so there's the property, of course, south of Griffin, east of Dykes. We go to the next slide, Jimmy. And now we're just zeroing in on it a little bit more so you can see our property and the properties around us. And then if we could go up one more. And then here is our site plan, um, and then the plat obviously is, is pretty much the same thing, except it doesn't show trees and that sort of thing, it just shows the lots. But as, uh, Mr. Cadem's mentioned, uh, all of the lots are a minimum of one acre in size. Um, and they all meet the code in every respect in terms of the dimensions and the frontage and this, and the, uh, and all of the other elements of the plan, including the buffers and roadways. Um, and so that's, uh, basically the site plan and plat. If I could just take a minute to go over, uh, that one condition. And this is in, um, the resolution for the site plan, uh, section two on page two. I noticed in the backup at the bottom, it says it's page twenty-two of three-hundred-and-forty-six. I don't know if that's helpful. But what you'll see near the top of the page, uh, says the Declaration of Restrictive Covenants. That's the one with respect to the Homeowners Association. So run with the, uh, community, must be approved by the town planner and town attorney before recordation, which must occur prior to issuance of the first building permit for a dwelling. Then it goes on to say, "Such declarations shall contain language prohibiting the restriction of animals in any manner, other than provided in the town's ULDC, and prohibiting streetlights, sidewalks, and access controls." We've actually been asked recently to see if we could not, uh, beef that up a little bit so that there would be even fewer deviations from the town code. So I just wanted to read something into the record very quickly. This is, this does exist in writing, uh, at town hall, but let me just go over it quickly. Um, "Other than the following exceptions, the applicant agrees that its HOA documents will specify that it shall be in full compliance with the town code, as may be amended from time to time, with the following exceptions." Uh, we had a, a fence detail that we were using for the whole property. What we've been asked is along Dykes Road, we have this white PVC split-rail fence that is what we will do along, uh, Dykes Road, but we've been asked not to restrict the fence choices of residents for the interior of the property. So we will not be restricting their choices. Uh, next, that out, all outdoor storage containers shall be limited to sheds. Uh, next, that mobile homes on lots that do not have a certificate of occupancy will be prohibited. Uh, next, that a sign from farm products, retail sales of goods shall be prohibited. And then, uh, number, number five, the HOA may enforce their property standards, which shall be in compliance with the town's code, but they can restrict short-term rentals. Of course, we know that the state statute does not allow municipalities the, uh, freedom to do that. And then finally, prior to turnover, the HOA may restrict architectural elements of the homes. After that, that would no longer be available. Uh, so I was asked to read that into the record, we have agreed to those, uh, I guess would, would be modifications to, uh, section two, paragraph three of the site plan resolution. Um, other than that, uh, there was a couple of questions that came in, I'm, I'm guessing maybe from the public and I was asked if I could address those, so I'll try to do that real quickly right now. And if I miss any, obviously, I'd be happy to do so later to make up for that. Um, first, we were asked to make sure that during construction, we would not have any runoff of water or drainage, you know, from our property. And so, uh, in addition to the South Broward Drainage Permit that we receive, we also have to do something called a SWIP Plan, a Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan, which is based on the guidelines of the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, but it is also enforced locally, uh, by the Drainage District and Broward County Environmental Protection Department. So we don't have to wait for somebody from Tallahassee to come by to make sure we're doing it right. The second question was to make sure that we are not having, uh, dust and dirt coming off of the property during construction. That same SWIP Plan, that Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan, provides standards for that too, also enforced, uh, locally, uh, by the county and also, I understand, if need be, by the town. And you do things like having water trucks or other things on the site to make sure that if it's dry, that you're not having dust and dirt, uh, going off the property. So those were a couple of questions, uh, that we had been asked. Uh, if there are others, I'd be happy to respond and if anyone, uh, on the Zoom meeting has questions, be happy to respond those as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis, I still see the screen share up, uh, so if Mr. Wright could take down that screen share.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Dennis, are you introducing any other witnesses or is that your case in chief?
Uh, that's it, if you have any questions, we have our technical people available.
Perfect, so at this time, I will ask any of the council members if it has any questions of the applicant or of staff at this time before we turn it over to the public.
I do not.
I do not.
I got a couple. Anybody else's, uh, you know, if anybody wants to go ahead of me, that's fine because I've got a number of questions.
Well, maybe you'll answer some of ours.
Okay. So I have spent a lot of time going through your site plan and I want to compliment the engineers, designers, and, and folks that contributed to this because it's very well done, you know, we get a lot of them and they're in various degrees of, uh, completion. And, and I have to say, this one is very well done. You know, I went through all the elements and, um, I, I have some questions and I, I also have a couple of concerns. Um, I'm very happy that you are respecting the, uh, the agricultural and rural nature of our community with some of the things you're doing, uh, you know, concerning animals and, uh, you know, allowing people to have agricultural sales, et cetera. But when I review your, your site plan, there are a couple of properties that I think were kind of highlighted that would be not possible for putting up a barn. And I want to draw your attention to lot twenty-eight and lot seventeen. Um, the majority of those two properties, and there's actually a couple more, but the majority of those two properties are taken up by the FPNL right-of-way. When you look at those lots, yeah, you can fit a house in, um, from the details in your plans, it looks like they'll be between seven and eight feet away from the FPNL right-of-way, which, you know, makes them pretty tight. Um, and, and due to that fact, uh, the town has a standard barn that, you know, if, if somebody wants to come and, and, uh, get a set of plans free of charge, uh, we, we developed them a couple of years ago and a, a barn that has two stalls, you know, a small barn, two stalls, and a tack room is roughly fifteen by about thirty-six. On those two lots, they're, they're of the size that I don't see a place you could fit in a barn. Um, so, you know, perhaps there's adjustments you can make so that all of these lots can have animals and, you know, and it's not just barns. You, you couldn't construct anything additional on the property because you can't, you can't encroach on the NFPL right-of-way, so if somebody wanted to put an extension on, if, if somebody wanted to put a separate detached garage on or, and any. if somebody wanted to put a separate detached garage on or any of those types of elements or a barn or any kind of agricultural building, it's not possible. So perhaps adjustments can be made there. Let's talk about drainage. And then Keith, what's the best way to handle this? Should they address them one at a time or at the end? Or what what's your thoughts there?
I think you're on a roll. So I'm sure that Mr. Mealy is writing down every question you have and will respond. And then if you need more follow-up, you can go from there.
Okay, thank you. So concerning the drainage, I looked over this in the context of the rest of the community. And the south end of the north end is you're up against the town park that has its own drainage facilities that really couldn't flood. I mean, we put that project in about two years ago, but on the south side of your property, where the existing homes are, we've got agricultural facilities there. We have an equestrian facility. There's, there's a lot of things going on on that side. And although you have outflows from properties that border that, I'm very concerned that, you know, I guess based on the plans you're using between six and 12-inch pipes to drain the area, now that's, that's a trade-off. The the good thing about a six to 12-inch pipe is that we're going to get some percolation back into the ground. All the water's not going to go into the canals. But what I am worried about is, you know, your, your system is gravity flow and some of the lots that are downstream could actually fill up in a heavy storm or, you know, hurricane or tropical storm, those sorts of things. And I don't want to see the town have any responsibility if you start flooding those properties to the south. You know, the recommendation I would make is I see, I think every property has got an outflow pipe. Perhaps you want to put some sort of outflow or conveyance into the canal across the south property lines of, I think it's 26, 27, 25, 26, 27, so that you don't have, you don't create any problems for the neighbors on the south because it's, it's an issue within the town when property floods an adjoining property and it always becomes the town's problem or South Broward's problem. So that that's another recommendation and try to address what's going on with those three lots so we don't flood any adjoining properties. I'm very happy to see that your, your drainage system goes all the way up to Dykes Road because Dykes Road traditionally has problems. We mitigated some of those issues a few years ago with the project I mentioned a moment ago. But, you know, the further to the south you go on Dykes Road, you know, the further away from the structure we put in, the more the flooding will will recur. So I'm glad you, you, you added those extra elements out close to Dykes so that you don't flood the front of your property when, if the road gets an excessive amount of of water. There's another really important thing that that we have to deal with frequently with the town and that is residents filling their drainage swales, residents not wanting standing water on their property, even though they're supposed to, you know, after certain kinds of storm conditions, they're supposed to hold for a period of time so that the water can percolate in. So what happens is people see water on their property and, you know, the uninformed go ahead and fill. We've had that happen all over town, drainage swales, all sorts of conveyance structures that residents have filled. It becomes the town's problem and becomes South Broward. What I'd like to see in the homeowners documents is the homeowners association take responsibility for maintaining the drainage system. That way, if if some neighbor pours fill over, you know, his and his next door neighbor's outflows, the HOA is going to have to go after these residents for their their behavior rather than the town get involved or or South Broward. You think it wouldn't happen, but we, we've got some drainage conveyance devices that, you know, the residents don't maintain out west and the properties flood. And when we go out there and start looking at it, the town needs to remediate. So, you know, I'd like the onus to be on the HOA versus the town such that if somebody goes ahead and, you know, illegally fills their property, there's, there's obviously the consequences of the HO, of the, the illegal activity, but the HOA has a vested interest. The residents have a vested interest to make sure this drainage system works properly. Because if if the drainage modifications happen downstream, close to the canal that all this water is designed to go into, it can flood everybody upstream. So, you know, that that shouldn't become a town problem. That should become an HOA problem. All right. Moving on to the, the two flag, the two flag driveways that look like crosses on the diagrams. They're not indicated to be paved at this point like the roads are. And essentially, they are roads to those specific lots. It just says that they have to be, you know, graded and compacted to ash-toe standards, which I get what that is and and it's a good thing. But if it takes your, your company a year to build the houses over there, those rock roads are going to disappear into the properties and start filling them with, you know, with, with the, the sand and gravel that's going to wash away. Is it the intention to do something with that or, you know, while you develop the property? Or is the intention to put driveways in there when you actually, you know, permit and build the homes that would be serviced by those two structures? So let's see, that's a couple of the questions I had. I'm glad to hear that you're going to cover animals in the HOA docs. I really'd like to see you cover the drainage in there. Let me see. Keith, I know that the document here says that this is an ungated community. And I don't know whether those, those flagpole driveways are, are community property or if they're owned by the residents, but we, we don't want to see a, an electric gate, you know, for the, the lots that are behind that. You know, if each property wants their own electric gate like so many people do in town, you know, that's fine, but not on the actual flagpole driveways at the entrance off the cul-de-sacs.
I, I think, council member, just so you know, and of course, the applicant can address it. They're not shown as paved because they're driveway to that individual lot. And if it is that individual lot's driveway, they are allowed to gate it in our code, meaning that it only goes to that one individual lot.
If it goes to one individual lot, I agree 100%. But the way I'm understanding these, the two crosses that are on the, the, the site plan, they look like they service a couple because otherwise why would they be plus shaped? They look like they service three apiece.
I'll, I'll let the applicant address those specific.
Okay. You know, if if they want to put a gate on each one of their own driveways, that's fine. But I wouldn't want to see a gate across the three, you know, to block traffic into the three. That kind of goes against what we try to do in town.
I agree. That was one of my concerns.
Thank you. Good, good. I've got support. Thank you, Dee. Um, I, I looked at the fire wells and I know we have them all over town. We've got them on my street. I was concerned and I know Davy has reviewed them and approved them, but they, they seem kind of far apart. You know, they just to, to tell you what I see around town, they're generally one every two lots as you proceed down the street or four lots if you look at both sides of the street. And, you know, the, the lots, depending on where you are, are roughly an acre width wide, you know, 200, 300 feet. You know, what I'm concerned about is that, you know, we pump, those are dry wells. And if you've got a truck that has, you know, a hard hose on the front for suction and then you've got 200, 300, 400 feet of hose to get to the property that, you know, is, is on fire, that, that could be a that could be the difference between a house burning down or not. It's, it seems like they need to be a little closer. Then I was theorizing that, well, maybe what they're doing is they're looking at bringing water since, you know, there's, there's a lot of different properties here in streets from it, you know, the street across or something along those lines. And I, I think that that may make sense on paper. But, you know, once everybody's landscapes and fences, you really can't cross a piece of property, another piece of property with a fire hose because it'll tinkle and create all kinds of problems. So just some comments on the fire wells. Something that Newell had brought up to me and Keith, perhaps you can address this. I heard that, you know, in the presentation that there is a public right to use. Can we define that as a, you know, private road with a public overlay? Or Jeff?
You're, you're correct, Councilmember Harmon. All of those are in all these HOAs that are in the town. And that is it's privately maintained, but the public has the full right of access over those roadways. So it is clear in the legal documents that the public have unrestricted ability to drive on those roads, even though they're private.
Good, good. Okay. Um, I, I just wanted to share my screen for a minute to highlight an issue that I'm hoping that that we can resolve here that I think also is beneficial to the community. I'm going to share and what I've got open right now is Google Maps, my friend, that I, I can, you know, see, see the town from a bird's eye view. So can you see my screen, everybody?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, everybody's seen the property. I think their main road and, you know, if the applicants would correct me if I'm wrong, the main road that comes in is roughly center of the property. So that would be right about here. We have some challenges that I think that any property owners on the front here would appreciate. If you look closely, whoops, all right, don't want to make anybody seasick here. This is looking north on Dykes Road coming south and everybody I'm sure is familiar with the median that's down the center. Then there's some traffic attenuators with, you know, the appropriate pavement marking. And then I want you to look at something. You see this here? This is where the illegal U-turn sign here doesn't do any good. People cross here, even though it's what, four yellow lines or maybe it's a double yellow line. I can't really see from the picture. But you can see it here. So you've got constantly people that either miss the left turn onto Griffin Road East or they miss Tom Thumb or for whatever reason, they need to make a U-turn. So these are probably the worst of the scofflaws. But then when you come down a little further, this is really the entrance to our park. But look at here. All right. I won't really talk too much about how there's, you know, this has all been carved up by cars. But you can tell that this is probably more widely used because it's only a double lane there or a double line there to make U-turns because if you notice, the pavement marking has been rubbed away from from the road surface by car tires. So what I would propose is this median and it could just be a curb. I don't know what the DOT standard is on something like this or the county standard is. But I would like to see this come down to their left-hand turn lane to stop all of this, you know, illegal turns that are going on here. First off, because it's certainly going to create problems for the people trying to make turns. But also, I think it'll make it a little bit better experience living along the road here if if you don't hear the squeal of tires making U-turns here all the time. One other question I did have for the approach in the entrances for the left and right turn lanes that are proposed is, will they allow U-turns or will they be left turn only? So will you have no U-turn signs up? Or will, will, will people be free to make the U-turn? And I think if that, this point, I think that was, that's my list of questions. So I look forward to the, the feedback.
Great. So before turning it over to other council members, I think maybe it would be best, Councilmember Hartman, if you don't mind, to have Mr. Mealy's in his group respond to your questions and see if you have any additional questions before we turn it over to another council member.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Dennis Mealy. Could I proceed?
Yes.
Thank you. So first, the way that we are planning to do our septic and well, the well will be on one side of the house, the septic will be on the other. Neither one will be in the rear because we're trying to keep these rear yards open for recreational amenities for the homeowner, a pool, a barn, whatever it is that they may want to do. So that's how we're planning those facilities in order to keep the backyard as, as open as possible. The issue about the homeowners association enforcing in case someone illegally fills a lot or whatever, yes, we would absolutely agree to do that. That you're right, that's something we should be doing. The issue of the flaglots, any of those driveways would not be gated so that it would include more than one home. If they want to gate, you know, off the edge of the driveway or at the end of the driveway, in front of their house, as you normally would allow, that would be okay, but they would not be able to gate the flaglot driveway that would include multiple homes behind one gate. And by the way, anything that we say here if it needs, needs to be added as a condition, we're perfectly okay with that. And then, and then I'd like to, if I could, my client, who's also a civil engineer, I think is the better one to help answer the questions about the drainage and the outfall and so on. And then those areas on the south and also the firewall distance separation. Is that okay if I introduce Mr. Wright to do that?
Thank you.
Jimmy, are you there? And can you come off of mute?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Would you, you know, just for the record, identify yourself and that you've been sworn, please.
My name is Jimmy Wright. I'm with CC Homes and yes, I have been sworn.
So can you help answer those questions?
Yeah. So let me first double back on something you said on the flaglots. The flaglot driveways, each flaglot driveway only serves one lot behind it. So there's two flaglot driveways. They serve the two lots in the back. Those are not shared by multiple lot owners. The flaglots were designed in accordance with the Land Development Code and the details reviewed by engineering, by the Town Engineering Department, so that the, so they, they do not serve multiple lots. Sometimes the hatching gets close and it looks like they're connected, but they, they are not. On the fire wells, I'll start with the fire wells. The separation on the fire wells is based on the NFPA standards. It was reviewed by the Town of Davie Fire Department. We actually had to look at each lot and the distance from each lot to the proposed fire well hydrants. We did a flow test on the existing hydrant that's out there on on Dykes Road in front of the project to, to estimate what the flows will be. And we'll have to follow that up after the fact with flow tests on the hydrants after they're installed, submitting that to the fire department as part of their review to confirm that they get the flow that they need. And most of these houses have two or three hydrants within 1,000 feet of the house. And that's the, the standard that the fire department use. So they are the, a lot of design and a lot of review has gone into the, the spacing of the fire wells. And again, there's verification afterwards. If any of them don't meet the flow requirements that were assumed, we would have to install an additional well. Okay, if I can also jump back to the drainage. On the drainage along the, the outfall, I just wanted to mention the drainage pipes at their smallest are six and 12 inches. But by the time you get, by the time you get to the outfall as you head west, as you head east, it's a 48-inch outfall pipe. So these pipes start small, but as they pick up more area, they get into significant size to handle the discharge, not only from the project, but from Dykes Road, we're picking up drainage to help serve Dykes Road. So the other question was about extending the median down to the south. If I can share my screen real quick.
While you're sharing, let me just interrupt with a quick question. So the purpose of those plus-shaped flaglot driveways is, is the intent then to provide FPNL access?
FPNL actually would have access from the north and south end through the project. I, I'm sure anyone who has that transmission easement in their property already is familiar with FPL. If they got to get in there, they want a gate or they'll pull your fence down. So FPL's access is not really through the driveways. The reason why it looks like a cross is because the fire truck as part of the fire review, they wanted to see that on each one independently, they could pull in, turn and back out. And it's not actually a cross. What it really is, is it's two Y's that are next to each other. So they're actually distinct. The fire truck's not going on to the neighbor's property. Each one acts independently and the, the fire apparatus has to be able to pull in. Each one acts independently, and the, the fire apparatus has to be able to pull in, you know, provide fire protection for the house, do a turn and back, and, and pull out, without having to back out down the driveway. So that's, that's what all that hatching is. So, um, on the, on the, on the, uh, the median, so we've got, uh, out here on the roadway, we've got this yellow hatching, if you can see where my cursor is.
Yeah.
So, where this yellow hatching starts, is where the end of the, is about where the end of the existing median is. And our turn lane is actually, uh, quite a bit further south of that. What we show now is pavement with yellow hatching. Um, that could just as easily be a raised median. Um, you know, that's a, honestly, it's just, it's just subject to the review of, of the engineering department at the town, but if the town's desire was for that, we have no objection to that being a raised median. Uh, and then, obviously, that would eliminate the U-turn, the illegal U-turns, people would have to come down to our driveway and make a U-turn. Um, in order to accommodate a U-turn at the driveway, if we were going to, we would probably have to expand the pavement at the driveway, they usually do a little bump out, um, to provide, uh, for a passenger car to be able to make a U-turn. Um, you know, that's something we can certainly look at with engineering, and see if, make sure it's feasible within the right of way.
Yeah. Um, I, I don't have strong feelings one way or the other, the reason I brought up no U-turn is, um, if, if you remember the picture I showed you, they've worn the street clean of its lines, and, uh, I don't know if you want that kind of traffic in your left and right-hand turn lanes. It's your call, though, as, as long as we can fix the problems that I'm talking about that prevent the U-turns, and as well, you know, again, like I said, the sound for those lots, um, you know, it, it certainly will diminish the, the road noise for that, from that type of activity, right?
What's gonna happen to the people on the opposite side of the road? If you go down the road? Hello? If you go down the road further, all those people on the, um, the other side of the road, they're gonna have cars turning in their driveways, they're gonna be tearing up all their gravel driveways, or whatever. Um, so I don't know what the solution is, I don't think the raised medium is gonna fix that. Hello?
Yes.
I mean, does that make sense? Do you understand what I'm saying? If they're traveling south, and normally where they would turn, which is bad, I know, because there's been accidents there, my daughter was involved in one of them, because a woman made an illegal, uh, turn there. But if they go further down the road, and make a right turn into someone's driveway, they're gonna, you know, it could impede on them and start tearing up their driveways.
Well, I mean, I've run into the circumstance a couple of times where I've changed my mind, I mean, I don't miss my turns there, but I changed my mind and wanna turn around, and I go down to the first street on the left and make the U-turn, it's that simple.
Yeah.
I mean, you're gonna get people breaking the law, no matter what rules you put in place, and whatever structures you put in place, but, uh, you know, I'm just trying to look at this specific project.
So that's something we can review with the town engineer, uh, ultimately, they're gonna be the ones that sign off on these plans for the work within Dyke's Road. Um, and if, uh, if a, you know, expanded pavement there, allow those passenger cars, allow those folks to make a U-turn at the entrance, instead of somewhere else illegally, um, if that's the solution, then, you know, we can, we can get with Rod, Rod and his guys and, and work that out, I'm sure.
That might be a very good compromise, only because, uh, then, uh, you're, you're fixing two problems, the problem I brought up and the problem Dee's brought up.
Yes, I agree.
Is it our intention just to prohibit, or, I don't see how you people, how you stop people from making illegal U-turns, if they're determined to make an illegal U-turn? I think, Bob, you had it right, you just go down to this first street on the left, and go in there and do that, there. Um, I mean, is there every, is there anywhere else, since I'm new at this, is there anywhere else in the town that we have done these kinds of things to prevent U-turns?
Uh, Griffin Road's got them.
Yes.
And they have some that are permitted, and some that are not permitted.
Right.
And then, everybody uses both, so.
I, I'm really talking about the interior, not Griffin Road, I mean, I understand Griffin Road, uh, I'm just talking about developments in general.
No, but that road is used so much, and, and you can travel any time of the day and go down there, and people are using other people's driveways, and especially spots that Bob is talking about, they just don't wanna go to.
I see the issue, I just don't know how the onus goes on us and/or a developer to prevent people from doing something illegally. It's already illegal to do it, so I think unless you put some kind of huge, high barrier all along the way, concrete, you know?
Yeah, I don't think Jersey barriers would be a good idea, but if, if.
I'm just saying, I think.
Yeah, no, I get it, uh, if there's a median down the road, yeah, somebody could drive across it in a truck, I've, I've done that when I've been stuck in traffic.
I'm sure you have not, Bob, no, no.
But I think if, if there is a way to U-turn in their, their entrance, you know, then there's a legal way to make the U-turn. Um, if they miss that, then they gotta drive down a little further, or make an illegal U-turn across the road.
Right, I can see, I can just, for the development, I mean, the people who live in the development, to have people making U-turns all day long in their entryway, that, that's all I'm, that's all I was looking at, is.
Let me ask a question.
That was my initial.
To me, it's crazy, that's all I, I.
Uh, Bob, let me ask you a question, if I could jump in on your, on your time right now. Um, Mr. Wright, on that screen you just had up, by the way, this is Gary Jablonski, talking, um, on the screen that you had up previously, you don't have to bring it back up, but I've noted on lot number two, there's a little side feature on the Dyke's Road, uh, eastbound side, is that the bus stop?
Yes, that's, uh, the county is requiring, for the bus stop, we have to, um, we have to meet ADA accessibility, so there's a, a pad there, a paved pad for, uh, folks in a wheelchair to be able to alight onto and off of a bus.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure that was the, that was the location of it, 'cause maybe that's gonna be where everybody's gonna try to do a U-turn or something, 'cause there's extended pavement there, or something to that effect, I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, then the guy in the wheelchair is gonna get.
But that'll be, that'll be raised up, that'll have a, a raised curb, the bus actually kneels to the curb, uh, so there will be a raised curb there to, not just to prevent that, but because that's the standard for a, for a bus alighting area, that you have a, a raised curb, the bus actually with the, uh, air system kneels down, and a ramp extends so that someone who's disabled can wheel up onto the bus.
Okay.
Is that our first bus stop?
I think so.
Uh, there's one on Griffin Road, as I recall.
Oh, that's right.
Halfway down.
Yeah, just, uh, no, it's actually just past the, um, uh, just, uh, to the west of, uh, Dyke's, on the north side of the, the road.
Yeah.
Does any member of the town council have any more questions of the applicant at this time, or for Jeff? If not, we'll open it up for public comment.
Yeah, let me just, uh, let me just go back to drainage for just another moment. Um, I'm, I'm certainly still concerned about the properties that are on the south side. Um, and I realize there's, there's, uh, there's some drainage at the east side of those properties, but I'm, I'm concerned. Is it possible, perhaps, to put a berm, so there's no encroachment over there? Or, you know, I, I'm, again, I'm looking at your, your, um, the design of, of the drainage system, I'm wondering if you can't just run a short pipe, uh, from, you know, down the property line, similar to what you've got on, on lots twenty, oh no, excuse me, thirty-seven, and I think it's thirty-eight, um, just extend that south on, uh, oh, excuse me, east, on those property lines, so we don't end up flooding them, because one way or the other, these lots are gonna be higher than those properties over there, it's just the nature of the way things are in our town, you know, you're gonna go in and you're going to build up to a certain elevation, and then, you know, put in the muck and everything else to grow grass on, while those properties are gonna be lower, just in, by nature of the fact that they haven't been filled in, who knows, ten, twenty, thirty, forty years. Um, I'm, I'm really trying to come up with a way to protect those folks against any potential flooding, since they'll likely be lower.
So, we would not object to, and we'd have to work this out with the South Broward Drainage District, as well as the town engineer, we would not object to a condition where, on the south side of lots twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, we would add either a berm or yard drainage, uh, to make sure that there's no, uh, there's no discharge into the neighboring properties during a significant storm event.
Okay, I, I think the pipe would be better, I mean, I threw a berm out there, but berms disappear over time, too. All right, that's all the questions I have, thank you very much for providing the feedback that you have, and also the flexibility.
Keith, I've got one.
Please, Mayor.
What is the, uh, footprint size allowed on these lots? Ten or twenty percent?
These are, uh, twenty percent. Sorry, meaning you have to maintain an open space of at least twenty percent, I believe that's.
No, no, the square footage you're allowed to build.
Hey, the footprint, the maximum footprint, Mayor, is, is twenty percent of the lot area.
We're saying the same thing. Any other questions?
Well, no, the open space and the drainage part is different, but, Jeff, Jeff got it.
Any other questions at the town council?
No, mine have been answered.
All right, thank you, at this time, we're gonna turn it over to the public for public comment. Again, Russell, because it's quasi judicial, they need to be sworn in, uh, and, uh, be limited to their, uh, two minutes. Russell, I'm gonna turn it over to you to, uh, control and to make sure they're sworn in. Uh, there is no question and answer period this time, any questions that the public will have, please state it, and the applicant or the town will respond when public comment is over. Russell?
Hey Keith, thank you. Uh, first speaker is, uh, last few numbers ending in seven-nine-six-five. Your, hello, you, your, uh, mic is muted, do you wanna speak? It's just a phone number, last four digits are seven-nine-six-five, do you wish to speak? Their hand is raised, but the mic is muted, we'll go back to them. Um, I'll allow the next speaker, which would be Fred Cox, to speak. Mr. Cox, are you there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you have two minutes, sir.
Uh, Fred, Fred Cox, thoroughbred lion, I have been sworn in.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, I'm pleased that animals are allowed, but I'm concerned that they really are allowed. Uh, Jeff said in his presentation, some lots are small, narrow, buildable areas. We don't know the footprint of the house, but with a fifty-foot setback for a structure that holds an animal, with the septic tank on one side, uh, well on the other side, I, I just wonder, uh, if some of the lots can really do that. Lot thirty-seven, I had concerns with, uh, particularly with the drainage, obviously you can't put the barn, uh, where the drainage is, so there's several issues there, uh, that I'm curious about. I thought, H, uh, new subject, I thought HOA documents, uh, were required to be made available to the council for review and to the public before the site plan was approved, uh, and they are not available, is my understanding. And I'm real pleased to see a bus stop, I think we should start then. And if you're wondering my concern, if you look at the Toll Brothers project on one-seventy-second, there are one-acre lots, uh, there's not room for a barn with fifty-foot setback. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cox. Um, just give me one second, please. Okay, um, going back to seven-nine-six-five, are you there? Okay, still don't hear anything from seven-nine-six-five, we'll move on to, I believe it's Noel Hollingsworth, Mr. Hollingsworth, is, are you there? Fourteen-seventy-three, last four digits. Okay, we'll move on. Uh, Jim Lasky, do you wish to speak, sir? Have you been sworn? Mr. Lasky?
Maybe nobody can, uh, speak.
Mr. Lasky, are you there? His mic says it's, uh, it's, it's open, I'm not sure what's going on. Okay, we'll try, uh, moving on to the next person. David Kozinski, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
They hear you.
Fabulous, all right, thank you, yes, David Kozinski, sixty-four-eleven Holliday Trail, I've been sworn. Um, don't wanna be redundant, but, um, the thing that they allow, uh, for farm animals, horses, without, uh, sufficient space for a shelter, is really not allowing for, uh, the farm animals and horses. Um, I'd like to, uh, be able to have some public input on any restrictive HOA, um, and, and without that, we don't have a way to, um, actually voice an, an issue on this. We came here to be left alone, and, um, an overburdened restrictive HOA is not compatible with coming here to be left alone. Um, the residents must be allowed to, um, have, uh, a, such home businesses like an accountant or an attorney, um, I think that's, that's compatible with the rest of the town. Uh, residents must be allowed to, uh, drive and park, uh, work and, uh, work vehicles such as municipals, uh, police vehicles, ag vehicles, and equipment. Um, one, uh, one glaring issue, um, that I just wanna make sure, that there is no street light. Um, we have a dark sky ordinance, it's, um, it, it's one of the foundations, um, of Southwest Ranches, um, going back, uh, I guess Don Mainz was, uh, the, uh, proponent of that at the beginning. Uh, just not really opposed to any of this, just some minor tweaks, and I think, uh, you'd probably, uh, make it happen. That concludes my comments, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kozinski. Okay, uh, the next speaker is Steve Bright Cruz, Mr. Bright Cruz, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you, can you hear me?
We can hear you, you have two minutes, sir, have you been sworn?
Yes, I have been sworn.
Okay, proceed.
Steve Bright Cruz, fifty-one-twenty Southwest, one-ninety-fifth Terrace. Uh, a lot of the issues that I wanted to bring up have fortunately already been brought up, so, just a few things that I wanted to clarify. Um, I was reading in the documents about the mitigation, it was also mentioned here tonight, the mitigation is not being done on this property. Um, I'd like to understand where that mitigation is gonna be done. Um, if there are mitigation dollars, it's critical that those are done, spent inside the town of Southwest Ranches, not outside, so that we can get the benefit, we're, um, you know, we're creating the issue, we should be able to get the benefit from it. Um, the other thing is, I saw in the document, the traffic study, I'm glad that was done, um, I do have a concern about additional traffic on Dyke's Road, in that, um, that road is already, um, heavily, has heavy traffic on it, and I would like to know specifically if a, uh, if there have been any conversations with Broward County to ensure that this additional traffic will not trigger an event such as a road widening there. I think we should need to get some sort of a written assurance, that this particular development will not trigger that type of, uh, road development. Um, I will say, overall, um, the project, you know, I'm pleased to see residential going in there, definitely gonna miss, uh, you know, I fly in sometimes into the ranches and, uh, always look down, and I see the, the track that's on this property, I'm gonna miss that, it's, it's kind of a landmark in our town, but, uh, understand that, uh, it's good to see residential homes going in here, rather than anything else, so that's, that's good. Um, the last thing, uh, just, uh, question, as far as electric in this area, is the power lines going to be above or underground? Um, and that concludes my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bright Cruz. Okay, let's see. All right, uh, the next speaker, I believe, is, uh, Jim Allbritton, Mr. Allbritton, are you there?
Yes, Russell, I'm here.
Have you been sworn in?
Yes, sir, I have been sworn in.
All right, you have two minutes. All right, you have two minutes.
My name is Jim Allbritton, 5600 Southwest 166th Avenue. I want to thank the council members who've spoken to the developers over the past few days and for those that asked the questions this evening. I think that you can work with the developer and this will be a very good area, a brand-new area for a lot of young people to come into Green Meadows. This is part of the Green Meadows area here. And if it goes the way that the discussion went this evening, it, it'll be a welcome part of Green Meadows. So thank you, council people, for doing all your hard work and staff for doing your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allbritton. Okay, the next speaker will be Ruben Blanco. Mr. Blanco, can you hear us?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay, have you been sworn in?
Yes.
Okay, you have two minutes.
We thought the, one of the purposes of this meeting was to, to see whether or not this project was going to be approved. Is this a project that's already been approved that's going to happen regardless of what the community wants it or not? Because this is going to obviously create a lot of traffic and it's going to change our community, a big characteristic of our community that we've always had.
Does that conclude your comments?
Not a comment, it's a question. Could you please answer the question?
They will address all the questions at the end.
Okay, yes, that's it.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker is Lauren Iton. Mr. Light Iton, are you there?
Yes, it's Debbie Iton, actually.
Okay, it's listed in the screen as Lauren Iton. I apologize.
It's her phone, sorry.
Okay, not a problem. Have you been sworn in?
I have not.
Okay, would you please, even though we can't see you, we'll take, take the word for it. If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. You have two minutes, please.
I'm, my question would always, would be echoing some of the others in that has the project already been approved? And a concern over the spacing on the property, that they are going to allow animals and that there will be no restrictive covenants on any kind of animals that they want in there? Because we do want it to be, you know, open space and for people to be able to have the same as everybody else in the ranches, where if they want chickens, they want goats, they want whatever, they can have it in the neighborhood and without a problem. And then also with them being allowed to have, you know, different vehicles in the area and the home-based businesses was another question that I had. Is that going to be allowed in the covenants? Are we going to be allowed to see it before they vote on it? Or is that already passed and we don't have the ability to vote on that anymore? I guess I'm a little confused as to where that is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'd like to go back, Mayor, if you would allow me, to try to pick up on some of the people that we tried to pick up on before, starting with, I believe it's Noel Hollingsworth at 1473, the last four digits.
Go right ahead.
Okay, Mr. Hollingsworth, are you there?
Seems he needs to unmute his phone.
Mr. Hollingsworth, can you hear us?
Russell, what's the code you have to type in if you're on a landline and you want to unmute?
Star nine, I believe it is. I'm sorry, Mr. Hollingsworth, we can't seem to hear you for whatever reason. We're going to have to move on. And the last, the last speaker that we had up there, well, I don't see Mr. Lasky any longer, but 7965, last four digits of the phone number. 7965, last four digits of the phone number. Okay. Don't hear them. And then we do have one other speaker, Mr. Diego Machado, who has registered as a lobbyist for tonight's meeting. Mr. Machado, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, have you been sworn, sir?
Yes, I have.
Okay, you have two minutes, sir.
Thank you. I'm here on behalf of Richie Cuneo, resident. My name is Diego Machado, by the way, my mailing address is 7600 West 20th Avenue, number 213, Hialeah, Florida. I'm here on behalf of my client, Richie Cuneo. He is resident of Southwest Ranches in the Green Meadows area. He asked me to come here today in opposition to the plan that is of these 42 homes. Some of the points he wanted me to touch on were the fact that he doesn't particularly agree with the fact that this is going to be or a ranch-style living anymore in his area. It's going to change the face of the area, change the face of the Green Meadows area, and specifically create a traffic burden on Southwest 160th Avenue and the residents that are currently living there. Also, the drainage is something that has, that was brought up at many times this evening. This is something that does affect him specifically. He's on the south side, as well as his neighbor Enrique Zamora and others that have voiced their opinion to me and asked me to come here tonight and to discuss these issues. They would like to, for have you oppose this tonight, if it's possible, to at least have some more concerns with, regarding the drainage, the traffic, and the type of burden that this is going to have on the area. From what I'm told by my clients, that in the past, the city has not allowed, or the town has not allowed for certain developments or homes to be built, even two homes on a two-acre lot. So if this could be passed to a different meeting and perhaps have some more discussion on this topic, that's something that they would greatly appreciate as they do not, they don't agree with the plat, the site plan or development as it stands.
Thank you, Mr. Machado. Okay, Mayor. Okay, Mayor, we have one person who submitted comments via email. A gentleman by the name of Andrew Levy. I don't know if you just want me to note that we did receive it and just include it in the record or to do something different, or if you want me to read them into the record, sure.
Russell, did only one note?
It's, it's a couple of sentences.
Okay, if you could do me a favor, you have now three non-panelists that have the ability to talk on, on the screen. If you could please make sure they're no longer talking permitted and then read those into the record.
Okay, let me just do that first. So the first one is the gentleman that just ended up talking. I'm not sure who the others that you're referring to.
Yeah, there's two others that.
Yeah, others you tried that didn't get through.
Correct. Okay, got it.
Thank you, Russell. Now, if you could please read that into the record. And then because they're not sworn testimony, we can't take it as official evidence, but we'll still read it in under our rules. And then we'll turn it back over to Jeff Cadence and Dennis Mealy for closing. Turn it back over to the council for comment and then deliberation.
Okay, so this, this email came in from Mr. Andrew Levy. He initially sent in an email basically saying that he'd like to state that he, that we live right adjacent to the property and we oppose to such a dense and cookie-cutter-type development that is no contrary to the heart and spirit of the town of Southwest Ranches. We are supposed to be a rural community and this development does nothing to further that lifestyle. Quite the contrary, it is the complete opposite. We have animals on our property, as do our neighbors, and the subject property has been a farm or equine facility for decades. Taking away 50 acres of rural property and turning it into a development is contrary to what the town is supposed to be about. A development like this is more fitting in a place like Western Ohioalia, not Southwest Ranches. He goes on later on this evening to send another email that basically just says, "I wish to add that I am very worried about flooding. Mr. Hartman mentioned building a berm to prevent flooding the neighbors on the south. He specified lots 25, 26, and 27. I am a neighbor to the south and my proposed neighbors would be lots 36 and 37, but the developer has not mentioned or agreed to add a berm or pipe to prevent flooding on the other half of the neighbors on the south." That concludes his email.
Thank you, Russell. At this time, seeing that there's no other hand raised and no other public comment, public comment is closed. I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Cadence to see if he has any final remarks. And then Dennis will turn it over to you for your close.
Thank you, Keith. I think the vast majority of those questions were directed to the applicant. So I'm going to let the, let Dennis and Jimmy answer most of those questions. One thing I heard a couple of times was people opposed to the one-acre lot, confused as to you know, whether this thing's already been approved, where is it in the process? And I think there might be some confusion because of the Toll Brothers property. There is another property that is currently community facilities, not zoned or lane use designated for residential development in one unit to the acre. And there's a long process they have to go through to try to get that type of approval. But this particular case, this property is already zoned and lane use designated for homes on one unit to the acre. So there is no lane use plan amendment. There is no rezoning involved. It's just a site plan and a plat. And that's what's being considered here tonight. There was another question about homeowners' documents being provided to the council. And that has not been the practice because homeowners' docs aren't always ready at that point in time. They evolve over several months when they're being prepared. So what we have done is deal with them at a policy level at the council. And that's where we have consistently enforced the requirement that they can't prohibit animals, they can't restrict the keeping of animals in a manner more restrictive than the town code, that there cannot be streetlights, that there cannot be sidewalks, there cannot be curb and gutter. And in this case, this particular applicant has gone further than any other in my recollection by agreeing not to impose any restrictions in a manner greater than isn't, they're already in our code, except for a handful of items that, that they read into the record. So that, that is our practice and that's how we enforce the council's policy direction. I think everything else is pretty much going to leave to Dennis and Jimmy to respond to. The only other one I think, can think of is Steve Bright Cruz's question about mitigation and traffic. Mr. Bright Cruz mentioned keeping mitigation money in Southwest Ranches. That there was, the mitigation that we were talking about was traffic mitigation. And that was a requirement of Broward County. Broward County in highway construction and engineering determines which segments require mitigation and they did not determine that Dykes Road south of Griffin required mitigation. Rather, it's a portion of Griffin that was the problem and Dykes or Weston Road that is north of Griffin. So this is being done in accordance with the county's requirements. And as we mentioned, Dykes Road will not be widened. There will be turn lanes into this development, but it will remain a two-lane road. The rest, I'm going to leave to the applicant.
You, thank you, Jeff, for your concluding remarks. Mr. Mealy, if you could please answer any remaining questions and provide your close before we turn it over to the council.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. So we, we are aware of the animal issue and the pole barn, the standard pole barn design issue. And we have confirmed that you can have such a barn on every one of these properties. And I think as Mr. Cadence just said, we're not going to restrict animals. We're going to be in compliance with your code with respect to animals on properties. We're not restricting home businesses in any way other than the way the town would restrict it because we did not give that as the handful of exceptions that Mr. Cadence has referred to. So yes, if the town code would allow a lawyer or an accountant or whatever to have an office in a home, they'll be allowed to do that here, too. If the town code would allow someone to park a commercial vehicle in their driveway, we're going to be able to do that here, too, because we are not deviating from the town code at all in that regard. As Mr. Cadence mentioned, we don't have streetlights, we don't have curbs, we don't have a gate. The, and the only restriction that we put in effect was on retail sales other than agricultural farm produce. But that wouldn't restrict a doctor, a lawyer, or whatever, operating out of their house if the town would otherwise allow them to do so. In terms of the drainage, I think we had a very good discussion about drainage tonight. I think that we made changes that were requested. I hadn't heard if there were a need to make changes. Lots 33 or 36, I think those were the couple, or maybe 37 they were reading. But if there is, I'm sure we would be happy to be just as flexible there as we were on the other lots where those questions were asked. I know that a number of people thought we were restricting animals just from the comments that we heard tonight, but I just want to reiterate again that we're not. The FPNL lines within the property will be buried. I know there was a question about that. We've already contacted FPNL regarding that. So I think those were all the questions that I had. Other than that, I just wanted to confirm that we worked very, very hard with your staff to make sure that we brought you a plan that complied with the code in every way. And then this evening, as we were asked to make adjustments, I think we did so. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, Mayor and council, since you have now heard from the applicant, the public and town staff, it is being turned over you for full discussion, deliberation, and any remaining questions that you may have. Recall that this item is quasi judicial in nature. What this means is that if you find that the applicant has met the requirements of code and has demonstrated that by competent substantial evidence, this item has to be approved. That is your charge today to determine whether or not it meets the code requirements, and if so, it has to be approved. Of course, it can be approved with conditions. Staff has added some conditions. The applicant has added some additional conditions. And of course, you should feel free to add any additional conditions you have beyond what is already stated. So Mayor, it's now over to you for the full deliberation.
Okay, Keith, one other thing, if you'd clarify, please, that we did not change the zoning on this property at any point. It came to us this way. We, we inherited this way.
There, there's no zoning change here. This is, as is zoning and land use.
Mayor, zoning and land use have not changed on this property since the town's incorporation. This property has been lane use plan designated and zoned for one unit to the acre since before the town incorporated. The town did not take any action to increase density here.
All right, I just wanted that clarified. Okay. All right. I'd like to go next. Keith, go ahead.
Okay, I, I just want to reiterate a couple of things. The vote that we're going to do tonight is not whether or not we do like the project. It is whether this project meets all the codes. And we do have an obligation to property owners and everybody else. These property owners have rights under the law, assesses that have been here. They're longtime members of our community. They built a world-class facility that is no longer in demand, but they have tried several times to sell this property. One of the people that they, they, they had met at one time was Chris. He was from the vet school. And for reasons, it, it did not pan out. So like I said, you know, if it meets all the code and stuff and, and the changes that we've made, I personally would like to see something a little more in writing that down the road in the future, whether it be a year after this development is done or two years, that this will not in any way impact Dykes Road to be expanded. Because we all see that there is going to be a lot more traffic that's going to be dumped out there. We all know this is going to happen. But we have an obligation to the. But we have an obligation to the residents here. It's been a two-lane road. We were told by the county years ago that it could stay that way. And I just think that we should have something a little more binding as far as the expansion of that road. That's funny for me.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just have a quick comment. I mentioned those two lots, I think it was seventeen and twenty-eight, that don't look like they would fit a barn. So I would appreciate if staff could review the plans to make sure that each and every one of these lots can have a three-stall barn. That way, you know, we're not limiting anybody's use of the property. And you know, they can have horses, they can have goats, they can have sheep, you know, really whatever they want, and be able to fit it on the property. You know, I heard about the seventy-five foot line. You can't have your well seventy-five foot from septic tank. Well, on those couple of lots, and they may be more excited to go over it with a fine-tooth comb. I, based on my own evaluation, and again, I'm a layman, I'm not a professional, I don't believe that you can fit barns on all these lots. So if they can, fine, I think they need to somehow stipulate that a barn can fit on each one of these properties, you know, off the right of ways, et cetera, with the setback requirements the town has. And then I'd be comfortable, but you know, I'd be comfortable voting on this tonight. But I think Rod needs to continue working on this with him to assure it.
Well, we also have a rule about one large animal per acre, don't we? And that doesn't require having a barn.
Regardless, I just don't want to limit the properties. Jeff, what's the town's rule on livestock in terms of number per acre?
That is something I will look up for you and have an answer in a second.
Thank you.
I have another question for Jeff, if I could jump in here.
Go ahead Gary.
Yeah, Jeff, do you have the documents concerning Broward County's, okay? I'm basically piggybacking on what Vice Mayor Schroder just said. That somewhere, there's gotta be some documents somewhere that say this has not been a trigger in expansion of Dykes Road. Am I correct in that?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, we do have that in writing.
Okay, all right, so we already have that, we already have that.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I meant, okay.
Yes, and you can even, you can even add a condition if you want.
If for any reason the traffic mitigation were to be changed, the method of traffic mitigation were to be changed, that it would have to come back to council. So in other words, you can make the site plan contingent upon that.
I would say that a little, state that a little differently Jeff. I would say in the event that this development triggers the expansion of Dykes Road, that this project will need to come back to council for further review and approval.
I like that.
Yeah, I'd like a similar on the barns on each property, you know, stipulation that it can sustain a three-stall barn as a condition of approval.
The dilemma with that is, is I don't think they'll be able to change their lots and stuff, right? That goes back to real estate buyer beware.
So we don't believe in protecting?
No, that's not what I said at all. But how are you gonna make, if they've got a layout and a drawing and a plan that they've already put together, and everything else fits, and you find an area that's a little off, how do you expect them to tweak it and modify it to make that happen? Don't you think they would have already done that?
This is, this is a computer drawing right now. They can do whatever they need to. They're maximizing the utilization of the property, and I don't blame them. But we have certain requirements. We want people, regardless of which lot they buy, to have the possibility of a barn. They can change whatever they want.
Are we mandating that people who purchase in here have to have barn-capable animals? I mean, a German Shepherd, a corgi, or a dachshund aren't appropriate as far as animals go? Because in this town, we have a lot of people with builders acres, thirty-five thousand square feet, that don't fall within the sizes of these. I mean, you can put one of those inside of these. And are they mandated that they have a, who mandates a three-stall barn? Why a three-stall barn? You can't have three horses on one acre.
So a three-stall barn is two stalls and a tack room to keep feeding and saddles?
Stalls are stalls, tack rooms are tack rooms. Okay?
Familiarize yourself with the town's plans, Delsa. You'll understand what I'm talking about. I won't go into detail.
Councilmember Hartman, the answer to your question is, there were, four horses would be permitted on each lot, under our code.
To specify what Jeff is saying, further, one animal is allowed for every ten thousand square feet in the RE category. And thanks to you, Hootler, for looking that up quickly and sending it. And that does not apply to household pets.
Okay. You have a motion in a second.
No, I don't think we have a motion yet.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve this contingent upon the traffic mitigation that Keith just suggested, that it have to come back to council if that should change in the future.
Yeah, Jeff had added something at the very end. What was it you added again, Jeff?
It was Keith had added it, I think.
Yes.
I, that in the event that, that this development triggers the expansion of Dykes Road, that this approval will have to come back to the council for further review and deliberation.
Right, I heard that, but when Jeff was going through everything, he had added something.
Oh yes, that was, that was that the applicant has to meet with the Rural Arts Advisory Board regarding their signs at the entrance and consider any recommendations the board has.
Yeah, we have, well, we have an ordinance that we passed, I think, right before COVID locked down. And they need to adhere to that, to those standards, which comes out.
Well, those standards only apply to signs in the right of way. So that's why I'm adding as a condition, because it's not actually subject to it.
All right, so I'll move on. I put that in my motion.
I think that's a good one. I second it.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion in a second.
So just, yeah, I just had a question. So Gary, the barn size or the barn capabilities on the property is not part of your motion?
Um, I didn't realize it had to be. I thought that was.
Well, I thought we're including conditions or stipulations, right?
Yeah, but I thought the barn size was already detailed in there, that every, they mentioned that every, every property is barn-capable.
Did it.
Is the way to say it.
Okay, that, so then we don't need a stipulation for that. And I guess it's then up to staff to evaluate the plans to make sure.
I would think so. I mean, I don't know how far we want to drill down on this.
Right, no, no, I'm with you. I don't want to go too far down as long as it's covered.
Yeah, that was previously mentioned in the record by the, I think, Mr. Wright or Mr. Mealy.
I question it, so, okay, I'm with it then.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Who's that?
This is Dennis Mealy.
Yes, Dennis, go right ahead.
I just wanted to ask if the motion would also include those exceptions in the HOA document, that handful of things I read at the beginning.
Thank you, Dennis, for the reminder. Since you stipulated to it, I was gonna include it in the resolution anyway. But if the council will include that in their motion, it would be grateful.
Yes, I so moved, I would include that in my motion.
So we have a mo, just for clarification, we have a motion to approve by Councilmember Jablonsky with the added condition of the signage needing to go to the Rural Arts Board for review, that there will be condition that this won't trigger the expansion of Dykes. And that Mr. Mealy's conditions concerning the HOA will be included in the resolution along with the other staff conditions that were listed within the resolution as drafted. Am I missing anything, or was that it?
That was it?
I think we got it.
And desecond it. Okay, any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, call the question.
Okay, Councilmember Amundson? Councilmember Amundson?
He's muted.
It's been pointed out, I am the idiot in the room, but I will vote yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, thank you. We need now a new motion on the, on the second item.
So moved.
I don't know who got that, Gary or Dee first.
Ladies first.
I'll give it to Gary.
Any discussion on the item?
No, I just want to make sure the motion is reflective of what was previously stated on the one before that. Is that correct, Keith?
Yes, I mean, there are no new conditions in this, because that's on the first item, but there are companion items.
Got it.
Okay, all the question.
Councilmember Brammanson?
You're muted, Jeff.
Wait a minute, Jesus Christ.
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
Okay, where are we?
Who's on first, what's on second?
Who's on third? Now, what's on first?
Russell, what's next on the agenda?
Your public comment.
Okay, Russell, could you please state the rules for the record?
All speakers are limited to three minutes. Public comment will last more than thirty minutes. All comments must be on non-agenda items, so they can't speak on an item that was on tonight's agenda. All speakers must state their first name, last name, and their address. And we'll call the speakers in the order in which they raise their hands, because we're in a virtual environment. So if anybody wishes to speak, please raise your hands. It's the three names, I think two of them were from before. Let me start with, oh, I see two other additionals. Let me just try this again. Again, a reminder that this is to speak on any items that were not on the agenda today. I believe this is Mr. Hollingsworth. I'll ask you to speak one more time, Mr. Hollingsworth. Okay, yeah. Mr. Bright Cruz.
Yes, it's Steve Bright Cruz. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, three minutes.
Great, thank you. Fifty-one twenty, Southwest one ninety-fifth terrace. I want to go back to a couple meetings ago, the meeting on July thirtieth, when the nursery ordinance was brought before the council. And it was dismissed without, without discussion, public input. It was voted down three to two. Three negative votes to send it to a workshop rather than vote on it that night were from the mayor and Dee and Delsa. Appreciate the support from both Gary and Bob. I want to read a section from that particular document. It's in, actually, in the document that came before them that day. And it's section X, it says, "Conversion of a single-family dwelling unit prohibited. A building designed, constructed, or used for a single-family detached dwelling shall not therefore be modified or utilized in any non-residential purpose other than the permitted home occupation residential accessory use." In other words, you can't take a home and turn it into a business. Well, while we were, while this council was sending it back, rather than taking action on it, other individuals in town were purchasing a property and turning it into a commercial entity. And this particular property is at Griffin Road and one hundred and eighty-sixth. So because the council turned this away, because the council didn't even allow comment on that, because the council did not pass it, and then if there were minor adjustments, tweak them later, we have lost another part of our rural town. Another part of our rural town that was residential agricultural is now commercial. It's because this council did not take action. We need leadership that will take action. And because of their inaction, we have lost another piece of the rural town that we will probably never get back. We probably will not be able to get this back. And, and we have one more commercial entity that has now moved into residential area. It's not right, it's not what this town should be about, and it certainly is not what the leadership of this town should be about. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bright Cruz. Move on to the next speaker. Next speaker is David Kozinski. Mr. Kozinski, can you hear us?
Sure, I can.
All right, yeah. Good evening, you have three minutes, sir.
Thanks. David Kozinski, sixty-four eleven Hollaty Trail. I'm kind of a little shocked at the moment, listening to what Steve Breakers just told us. Kind of shaking my head, that I, I think that there's some council members that are sitting up there, probably should be showing some leadership, some spine, instead of caving in to the special interest. I had a neighbor call, changing the subject, a neighbor called me and talked about the speeding along Mustang Trail. That car just zipped by, I think it was early morning, two days ago, going from west to east on Mustang Trail, crossing Hollaty. They didn't even stop at the stop sign, just flew by, and they said, David, is there something that can be done about this? So I said I'd mention it to public comment and make my case. And last, the land use issues that are coming up before the town, it troubles me that we get not even a week to review the entire documents. And I assume that maybe the council members, I don't know how long the council members have to review these. I suggest that maybe there could be some kind of database created that when a landowner makes a petition, an application, at the time of the application to the council, that the council members can access those documents and download those for a more substantive review instead of being a rat race, right at the end, when everybody's rushing around. And it appeared that, like, I mean, getting certain, talking to certain people about this, it was just like all thrown upon us at the last minute. I think the council members should be given an access to the land use application at the time that it's applied. And, you know, it's up to the council member whether they want to get it or not. But they should have access to those documents. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Kozinski.
Okay, we're gonna try again with Mr. Lasky. Mr. Lasky, can you hear us, please?
Em, you're muted.
Mr. Lasky, can you hear us?
Hear me now?
Can hear you now.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you. You have three minutes, and we can't have discussion items on the agenda.
Okay, all right, fine. For a long time, you guys have been ignoring the need to readjust the ratio of retention on your property. You are permitted, permitted only, for so much drainage throughout the whole Broward County area. We are just one little cog in the big wheel. I've been going through a lot of crap, I might say, with my property and the size of the house next to me. If you apply the change in the septic tank rules in July of two thousand and eighteen, you'll see that there's a big problem here, the way my land drains, the size of the house, and the amount of land beyond the pad that was built next to me. If you take some of the other If you take some of the other areas that you're planning to develop, you're gonna be changing the floor height, well, I believe eleven and a half feet. It might be off a few inches here because I'm just going from memory of what a drainage contractor recently told you. But you're gonna have to deal with the runoff. There's a whole bunch of, of little loopholes in the current drainage regulation through the Green Act that they're trying to apply, where twenty percent of your property has to be drainage, okay? But trouble is, when you start putting all that extended roof area over there, you increase the size of the, of the non-permeable area, which got more area to collect water, force it down on twenty percent. But the twenty percent is based on some Florida manipulation, okay? Where they don't apply the real rainfall we're experiencing to the government monitors. So all I can say is, we keep limiting our capacity to drain it off. We're permitted by so much capacity and so much of a timeframe, which I intend to look up. You guys need to review that, and I don't see where you're restricting the roof area on some of these one-acre-plus-or-minus properties where you could actually manage it a lot better. Bob Hartman brought it up, but the only thing he didn't really go into was those ratios that I'm talking about. So, you know, the properties that are being considered and being approved are gonna have those problems. Anyway, that's my story. Talk to you later.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor, we got, we are, we're gonna try Noel Hollingsworth again, and then we have, I think, Jim Auburn.
Okay.
Russell, you're muted.
Mr. Auburn, can you hear us?
Yes.
All right, go ahead. Got three minutes, sir.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to also touch real quick, if I could, on the drainage. I was part of the first couple of meetings that took place when the Green Meadows Drainage Project was underway or getting started. And my question was, everything off the other two or three streets to the east of us will drain into the canal between one sixty-fourth and one sixty-sixth. I know that they're getting close to completing that project, but I'd really like it if someone from the drainage, South Borough Drainage, could take a look at one sixty-sixth canal. When I came out here in eighty-five, we swam in that canal. It was wide open. I don't think that you can get a boat through there now if you paddle a canoe. It is overgrown, it's congested, there's part of the bank. I think the mayor's been out and seen where the neighbor's bank has fallen into the canal because the iguanas have caused it to collapse. There needs to be something done, I think, to the canal. The rains that have come, we've been very lucky to avoid the hurricanes, but with all the other streets, I am a little concerned about the drainage on one sixty-sixth. So if somebody could look at that and maybe make a decision one way or the other to clean it or do whatever would need to be done, it would be greatly appreciated by the residents on one sixty-fourth and one sixty-sixth in Green Meadows. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Auburn. Okay, let's try Mr. Hollingsworth one more time. Let's see.
Russell, do you have the ability to unmute him from there?
I can only ask him to unmute. I can't unmute him, no.
Okay.
Mr. Hollingsworth, can you hear us? If you can, please unmute.
One more time on the keys that he has to press on his phone to unmute.
Believe it's star nine. If not, try pound nine. It's either one of those two combinations.
Who's is that?
We're trying to get a hold of Noel.
Russell, can you do me a favor?
Yes.
Can you call Mr. Hollingsworth from the phone at the dais? And allow him to speak his three minutes through the microphone if he's unable to mute his line?
Yes. Well, let me, in the meantime, let me try to get, we have one other speaker. Should I start with that person?
Yeah, please, have your final speaker speak, close public comment, and then have Noel be the final speaker.
Okay, so the final speaker is Lauren Eitzen. I believe it's Debbie Eitzen, so let me allow her to speak. Ms. Eitzen, can you hear us?
Yes, yep, just unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes.
Debbie Eitzen on West Palomino Drive. My question is, is previously, some months back, there was some discussion regarding some changes that had come from committee about covering, having to enclose horse trailers, cover them, and it encompassed a number of other items. And I'm wondering where that sits at this point in time, if there's been any updates to that, if there is something we can get involved in to have some more discussion on that so that we know where it stands. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eitzen. Russell is currently trying to get Noel Hollingsworth on the phone so that he can complete public comment. But Mayor, while he does that, I think the next item is board reports, so maybe we can just call the board report while he's trying to get him on the phone to not waste any time.
Okay, we can do that. Do we have any board reports? I don't know that we do, but.
Okay, I have Noel Hollingsworth here, if you are ready to.
Go right ahead.
Let's make sure you can hear Mr. Hollingsworth.
Can you hear me off?
Yes.
Okay. This, what I'm reading is going to be about what was supposed to be on the previous, which you have already voted on. And I'm only gonna speak on one part. On the small buildable lots, where does a barn for farm animals go? You have to allow for the septic well field, and you can't build on that. You have a water well, potable water well, which has to be seventy-five percent from any structure, and it's natural, and a barn is edible. You have a fifty-foot set of any property lines and residential buildings for farm buildings according to our code. Using the standard barn plan, which is a standard for our town, which is just all an attack room, you can see where it can go on these flagpole lots, simply because you have to maintain for the animals the best building, the best farm animal practices for the animals. And if you are not, you are against our code. Code says, the best animal practices says that they have to have shelter, so therefore a barn is necessary. Unless you have an animal which does not need a barn, and the only animal in the code that doesn't need a barn is a cow. So where do these people put their barn, on the smallest lot, the narrowest lot? Where is it going to fit our standard barn that is approved by the council and is available for every resident? So therefore, it is going to be available to these individuals. Where is it going to go? Because I haven't answered that question, and I don't think they can fit it in. Because I've done the measurements off the plans, and I don't see where it can fit. Maybe it can, maybe it can't, but if it doesn't, then those lots are denying them the right to be rural lifestyle lots. And they say their lifestyle, they allow the animals, but they can't beat best management practices. Also, when a person brings their horse trailer in, they're going to complain. And guess what? No one does it say that those aren't allowed on the property. How about the mobile homes, which we allow on the property? How about the boats, which we allow on the property? Are all of those in the homeowner's documents denied? What is the problem, and we haven't seen the documents we need to know? That's what I have to say about that. I had two other pages to go through, but that's the only one I'm going to be able to take care of at this point, except that the home commercial and municipal vehicle take homes, they deny the police and other communities homeowner documents and fire to bring home their vehicles, and they throw them out of the association, and they had to sell their property in the heap. That is my problem with HOA in South Florida. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. Good evening. All right, Mayor, that's, that's the last of the public speaking. I don't have anyone raising their, their hands for board reports.
No workshops.
So the next item, the agenda is council member comments, Mayor.
Okay.
I'll go.
Like to go. Go ahead, Dee.
Oh, Gary went first. You can go first.
Okay, thank you, Dee. Just a few things. One is just some general announcements. We still have our photo contest going on. Farms and Barns, it's, the submission is by the seventh of September, so it's coming down to the wire. So if you've got the photos, please send them into Town Hall. We have hazmat at the barn on the twelfth from eight to two with shredding for a tight window of about two to three hours. And on September seventh is Labor Day, and the Town Hall will be closed for that day, and I just want to mention that. This is something else now entirely that I'm gonna bring up. Most of you have gotten, I think all of you have gotten an email regarding requests from Madison Sullivan to be our youth ambassador for our young people in our town. And I have questioned her repeatedly on various things, and some of you have seen some of the questions and the email. And she has a small presentation to make regarding that, and Mayor, I'd love for you to allow her to move forward with a PowerPoint on this position that she wants to create for our town, which is at no cost to our town, and it's all strictly, you know, public relations with our younger crowd.
Of course, of course we would.
Okay, Madison, are you, are you there? Or Russell, can you help me out with that one or no?
I'm right here.
Okay.
There you go.
How you doing?
Hi, how are you?
Great, great. Russell, do you have a PowerPoint that Russell has?
Yes, I do. Give me, give me a minute. She get, she sent it to me late this afternoon. Let me just pull it up. Give me one second here. See something there? Add it here for a second. There it is, okay. Okay, there you go.
Okay, um, so I petitioned back in May to start a youth council. And basically, it's to make sure that the youth is more involved in our community, and I have a PowerPoint to explain more about that. And I was just wondering if you would think, while, while I was going over the PowerPoint after it, can you guys vote on it, please? If that's possible. Okay, so Leaders of Tomorrow, students who serve on youth councils are the leaders of tomorrow. It is so important to have the support by the Southwest Ranches students and to get them involved in government issues. These councils are composed of students from schools within the area and serve as an advisory board to the council. The teens in Southwest Ranches are already known as hardworking leaders, and this is just what you need to be on a youth council. So what is a youth council? A youth council is an advisory board of local youth who are usually high school students. The youth provide advice to community organizations, and the youth participate in events held in Southwest Ranches and help in any way needed. Why do we need a youth council? Young people need to be vested in knowledge and skills to be the next generation of Southwest Ranches leaders. Youth councils promote regular and active civic engagement. Who benefits from youth council? First, students benefit. They will ensure their voices are heard in local government. They will understand the value of public service, and their service is a bonus activity for college and scholarship applications. And then the council also benefits because it allows the council to connect with the students from across the town, and serving is an opportunity to make a difference in the lives of the youth. And then we have competitions that only people in youth councils can compete in, and this helps them with scholarships and college and a whole bunch of things. So some of those competitions are FLC Annual Conference, Legislative Action Day Civic Education Program, video competition, community service contest, and there's a bunch more. And I'll keep you guys updated on what competitions will be in and a bunch of things like that. So that's all I have for you guys.
How many people would be on this committee?
Anyone who would want to be in it. Basically, I have a few friends that are in my Gap Club. I started at West Broward that live in Southwest Ranches. And I asked them if they would want to be part of something, and a whole bunch of people that already volunteer at our events. This is just something more that would help them, and it would be more organized, so I could tell them to, instead of just randomly selecting people to volunteer, I could just tell this group, "Hey, can you guys volunteer at this event, this event?" And then we have a definite group that would help at each event.
I guess, well, that explains part of it, but I guess what I'm getting at is how many people would be on this committee or part of this committee that would meet or talk with the council or bring us up to speed in what their issues are, what you're talking or learning or asking about? So is it five people? Is it three people?
Like five to seven people.
Okay, Keith, is there anything special or a way that would need to be done?
I think Ms. Sullivan is just asking for your approval tonight. With that approval, administration can write the necessary letter or whatever she needs to proceed. So I think she just needs consent from the council.
Okay. Just, I, go ahead, Gary.
I'm sorry, I, I, I'm in support of this. You know, I think it'd be good to give it a shot. Basically, what we're looking at is another, an addition, not, not another, but an addition to our advisory boards, except it's made up of the younger generation. And it gives them a voice that we, you know, probably need to hear, you know, on related topics and things of that nature. I think it's a, it's a good idea, and I'd like to move forward with it if we could, you know, with a council blessing, obviously.
Got a question as well.
Go ahead.
I, when Madison first sent this out several months ago, I, I love this idea. I got started in something like this as well, so, you know, I a hundred percent support it. The only, the only question I had from Andy, for Andy, is what, what type of support do you expect the town would have to provide for something like, because I know you've been through the documentation as well. You know, is this a council liaison? Is this a, you know, a staff liaison? Would we run it like Gary was saying, similar to one of our normal boards, and just extend our boards by one more and treat this from that perspective similarly?
I agree. I think it would be appropriate to have a staff liaison just to facilitate, and a council liaison would be appropriate.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good job, Madison, as always.
All right, well, I think we're, most of us, Dee, Delsa, any input here on this? Are you, you're okay with this? We're all on board?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. You're muted, Delsa.
I said I've known Maddie a long time, so she knows where I stand. Always with her.
Thank you.
Awesome, okay.
Ms. Auburn, you've got it.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
You'll be, you'll be, you'll be dealing with Andy and if this thing's ironed out or worked out, and then let us know when we're off and running.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Have a good night.
Nice to see you, Madison. Okay, Gary, anything else?
Wow, was it still my turn? No, I'm done.
All right, who would like to go next?
Me?
Go right ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, you can.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm very excited that I've had the opportunity for the last couple of weeks to be talking to a lot of residents. to a lot of residents. My list is growing and growing and growing from our last meeting, different things in the town and ordinances. Um, the, the thing with Madison, starting this up, I think it's a wonderful opportunity. You can never start too young, Madison. Keep up the good work. Um, I made a couple of notes, but believe it or not, I've been up and down here and lost them, but like I said, I'm, I'm just real happy that I've had the opportunity, like I said, the last couple of weeks, to be speaking to all these residents. And it's not just here in my district in Sunshine Ranches. I've reached out, and people have been reaching out to me from all the different areas. I can't wait till the COVID is over so that we can all get back to the feely-touchy stuff and see everybody again. And I look forward to, I look forward to this election. I did want to comment about something, though. I think that there was a comment made tonight about being a leader, and I think we've all been leaders. I've seen it in the past, I see it now. Sitting up here is hard work. It shows leadership, it shows tenacity, endurance, and I think every one of us have it. I mean, I can speak for a couple of, a couple of us. You know, Gary and I go way back. Gary's been an absolute outstanding leader of this community. He's been involved, Bob has been involved, Delta's been involved. She knows just about everybody in here. Doug has been involved, and I've been involved. I just want you all to know that I just got off the phone a couple of weeks ago with our old mayor, Michael Fink, and keeping her abreast of everything that's been going on. And so for us, not to be leaders and sitting here, I think, is, is not the right thing to say. I think we're all leaders. I'm not going to put myself in a position to say I was maybe the best, but I'm a good leader. I work very hard. Anytime there's been an issue that come up, even before I was a council member, I worked hard at that. And I fought with each one of the developments, whether it be Green Meadows, Country Estates, Rolling Oaks, on different issues they had, and we all stood together back then. And I find that there's some dividing this in us now, but that will change. When the COVID is over, things are going to change. We're going to get back to the way it was, and residents, don't stop calling. I'm not going to stop calling you. We're going to stay in touch, and we're, we're all going to do well. And that's about all I got to say. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Who'd like to go next?
I had a couple of things, I had a couple of things I was going to say, but I'm going to save them for the next meeting. I just want to say to anyone who might still be listening that it's been pointed out that I am not a know-it-all, and the one thing I want everyone to know is I've never claimed to be. And I think when I speak to you, it is from truth, it's from my heart, it's because I am a resident and a taxpayer and a neighbor in this town. That's all I have ever been, that's all I will ever be, and I wanted to represent people. But if you're looking for a know-it-all, it isn't me. If you're looking for a great pretender or someone who will tell you what you want to hear, it isn't me. I will, on the other hand, listen to all sides of every issue, give it my very best shot, and vote on it, making some happy, some maybe not so happy, but that's what it's all about. So I appreciate everybody listening tonight or that came in here tonight on this Zoom meeting, and I too, like Dee, would like very much for this to be over so that we can have face-to-face again, that it's not so impersonal, it's more personal. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, Bob?
No comments this evening. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Hey, Seth, you know, I just want to say, everybody stay happy and healthy and be careful and stay safe. We got an election coming up. We appreciate everyone's input. I think most of you know my phone number and how to reach me if you need me or have any questions or any issues. If I don't know about something, I can't help fix it. Please call me. Look forward to seeing you all out on the trail in whatever fashion that might be in. So thank you very much. All right. Done with that, we're on to Mr. Burns or in Kisa?
No comment from Legal, so I'll turn it over to Andy.
All right.
Thank you, man. Just got a couple of things, very briefly. One is, as you all know, Davy Police is in the process of hiring a new chief. Obviously, we're very concerned with who that person is, so I wanted to let you all know that Davy has, has invited me to participate in the panel as part of that discussion, so I will be part of those interviews to make certain that we get somebody who understands our needs and our town. So I just want to keep you aware of that. Zoom is going to be making some changes to their meetings in the process, and I know Russell was ready to talk about it tonight, but we'll, we'll get that information out to you and share that with, with you and with the public, just that's, just wanted to give you a heads up that that's coming. And the COVID update, just at our last meeting, we were at 162, our current number is 191. But I participated in a city manager's Zoom meeting today, and we had one of the assistant county administrators on, and we did ask him what, basically, what's the plan on Phase Two, where is the county in that process, and, and, and what's, what's their thought process on where we're going? And what, what they acknowledged to start with was they felt like they went too fast last time in opening things up, and that's part of what led to our sliding back downhill and increasing numbers. So what they have said is that Phase Two will be very deliberate, they'll be very slow with it, they're looking for trends in multiple categories. And, and by, when I say trends over multiple categories, I'm saying over weeks, not days, and that the reopening will be, will be very gradual. So while Palm Beach County is starting to talk now about going to Phase Two, I don't think it's imminent for, for Broward County anytime soon. They're aware of it. They're, they're not at Phase Two now, they kind of see where they are now as kind of a Phase 1.5, but they're going to be very cautious in, in moving ahead to Phase Two, and so I wanted to make all of you aware of that. And other than that, Mayor, that's, that's really all I have for tonight, so thank you.
Okay.
I, I can't give a, if I, if I, just a quick on the nursery ordinance, because there was a question raised by the public on trailers. And, and the only thing I'll say to that is, is the only thing that was in the nursery ordinance that was proposed that dealt with horse trailers, dealt with setbacks and screening, and that, that has been removed by unanimous council consent. And, and so that was really the only thing that was in there that dealt with horse trailers, but we will be getting that, that rescheduled to get back in front of you for further discussion certainly as soon as we can. So thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Russell, resolution number 10, please.
Yes, Mayor, this is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing the town to piggyback off of an agreement with Advanced Data Solutions, Inc., for the conversion of architectural drawings, permit records, and other official town documents, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute a purchase order not to exceed $12,000 and zero cents, and providing for an effective date.
I get a motion in a second, please.
So move.
Okay.
Okay, any public comment on this matter?
Any, Mayor?
No one?
No one.
Back to us, any questions about this? Ain't none, call the question.
Okay, Mayor, Councilmember Braminson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hartman.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder.
Yes.
Mayor McKay.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Right. Approval of minutes for July 30th, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Okay. All right. Any public comment? We've been corrected before.
None this evening, if you're, Mayor?
No hands raised?
No hands raised.
Okay, all right. Back to us, nothing else, we're good? All right, call the question.
Councilmember Braminson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yep.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Okay, Gary.
Danny, Dee, go ahead.
Gary, you're up.
No, you're on, you're on, Gary.
Motion to, motion to adjourn.
We'll take it, we'll take it. Thank you, everyone, it was great seeing everybody, and hopefully we'll be back together in the near future.
We're one day closer, we're one day closer.
That's right. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
All right, folks, good night.
Good night, Gary.